Well, for everybody being here tonight, this is the June 5th Planning Commission Bowling Green Warren County, our meeting and, well, we'll get to that in just a minute. Matthew, if you'd call the roll.
Commissioner Drane?
Yes, sir.
Christopher Gay?
Yes, sir.
Christopher Graham?
Yes, sir.
Christopher Shaw? Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Christopher Vitale? Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, you have the minutes of our May the 15th meeting in your packet. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we'll call for motion, please.
To move.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes.
Christopher Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Abstain.
Commissioner Volker?
Abstain.
Commissioner Drane?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, we have our subdivision site development plans in our packets. They're a little bit different this time. We have the city and the county subdivision plans. Are there any questions? If not, we'll have them submitted as applied for. All right. Any new business, Mr. Peterson?
No, sir.
Any old business?
No, sir.
We will enter into our public hearing and, Mr. Peterson, we have our staff here. Just, since we don't have an attorney?
Well, I'll read this statement, Chair Warren. I request that you order the record to include all relevant statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket, and the qualifications for each staff witness. And finally, I request that you administer the oath to each of those witnesses.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you all very much. If somebody could, we've got a lot of people in the audience tonight. If we could put the, how the hearings go, Jenny.
Here, let me stop for a second.
Thank you very much. So, everybody that's here tonight, there will be a presentation from the staff about any of the items we are dealing with, and they make their recommendations. Then the applicant, if anybody is the, whoever's the applicant for a project, they will make their statements. And then we will always call for questions from the audience. And each person, the representative, if the, somebody in the audience has a representative that they oppose to this, we will give them 15 minutes. Other than that, each person individually, each body, each person can speak. We will give you three minutes to give your opposition if you so choose. Good to go. Our first item tonight is 2025-05-DP, 2025-C18 ABCV Holdings LLC, Greenwood Crossings, AWC Investments LLC, care of Christian Volker and Jody Allen. Have filed an application to amend the general development plan conditions for 6.22 acres located at 512 Old Lover's Lane. The applicants also filed a concurrent application requesting a conditional use permit to operate multiple short-term rentals. The area subject to this application is currently zoned RM3 townhouse multifamily residential. Jenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting February 5th for this property on Old Lover's Lane. Current zoning of the property is RM3. Current land use is single-family residential. And then the future land use map designation is moderate-density residential. And so here are some images of the property, just for some context on what it looks like more recently. And then here is their proposed site plan for you all. And so, as you said, the applicant is proposing to amend the development plan for 6.211 acres located at 512 Old Lover's Lane. The purpose of the application is to allow for the potential of short-term rental uses within the development. And then there is also a change proposed regarding building orientation along Old Lover's Lane. Those DPCs are on page three for your reference. If the development plan amendment is approved, the applicant is also seeking concurrent approval of a conditional use permit to operate three short-term rentals. And then the conditions for the short-term rental proposal is on page five, or aren't, are on page five, excuse me. The property history, the property was rezoned from ag to RM3 by this body in 2021. And then looking down to the bottom of page one, with some points to consider, the proposed development plan amendment and conditional use permit applications do comply with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and remains generally consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan. However, there are some points to, there is one point to consider regarding the development plan amendment, and that is over on page two. So we'll look to building orientation, bottom portion of the page. So part of the development plan amendment proposal includes removal of the requirement that the building nearest Old Lover's Lane be designed to face Old Lover's Lane, and the building nearest Old Lover's Lane as constructed does not comply with this requirement, nor were the elevations approved by the design review board through the overlay development plan process. Please note that the removal of this DPC requirement does not relieve the applicants of the design review board requirements, and the applicants understand that they are required to file a subsequent overlay development plan amendment application to address this, as well as other deficiencies that were noted by staff during a recent site visit. And so with that, we will also look back to the bottom of page one, and there is an additional point to consider regarding the conditional use permit with the short-term rentals. The commission should evaluate the impact on long-term housing availability in this area of the community if existing residential units are converted for short-term rental use, and further determine if such use is compatible with the existing single-family residential uses within and adjacent to the development. With that, staff's recommendation is for approval pending public hearing testimony and discussion here tonight.
So Jenny, all we're deciding tonight is the short-term rentals? And then the design review board takes the next step?
Yes. So the site design and then the building, the architectural considerations, that will be under the review of the design review board.
Correct.
You all will be reviewing the amendment to permit short-term rental uses, and then the subsequent requests for short-term rental uses.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
Yep.
Commissioners, any questions for this request?
So Jenny, I'm sorry for the redundancy, and I want to make sure that understand, we're not going to consider the overlay district requirements here tonight. Is that correct?
Correct. That's the design review board.
Got it. Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions for this request?
Thank you.
Is the applicant here, or their representative, anything you would like to add to this? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question or opposition to this request? Okay. Hearing none, commissioners, we call for motion, please.
I make a motion to approve the proposed general development plan amendment, docket number 2025-5DP. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed general development plan is consistent with adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan, is demonstrated by compliance with the objective and action items in the staff report. Further, I also find that there have been major changes in economic, physical, and social nature within the area of the property in question, and I request the finding of fact and recommendations include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Christopher Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Drane?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The motion is proven, it's planning commission final action on both items. Our next item tonight is 20-
Chair Warren, we need a motion to be made on the conditional use permits.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you so much. Conditional use permits, so we need a, we need a motion on that.
I make a motion to approve the proposed conditional use permit, docket number 2025-C19, for a short-term rental with the condition as presented in the staff report. Testimony presented in this public hearing has shown that the use is not detrimental to public health, safety, welfare of the, in the zone in which it's proposed. The use will not contribute toward overburdening to municipal services. The use will not result in increased traffic congestion, additional parking problems, substantial increases in population density, environmental problems that constitute a nuisance, that the use otherwise needs requirements of the zoning ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Drane?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Matthew. So it is planning commission final action on both items. Our next item tonight is 2025-07-DP, Stagner Farms LLC, care of Renee Isaacs, Michael Vitale, and George Vogler. They filed an application to amend the general development plan, development plan conditions for 5.7 acres located south of the intersection of Small House Road and Elrod Road. The area, the area is subject to this application is on PUD planned unit development. Ms. Hurt?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back in April for the development you just referenced, located on the southeast leg of the roundabout at Elrod Road and Small House Road. This is the current aerial view of the property. And as you mentioned, the current zoning is PUD planned unit development. The entire development area was rezoned to this current designation back in 2022. Current land use is vacant and agriculture, and the current future land use map is moderate-density residential. We have some property photos for your reference, and we can go back to these as needed. And then I'll just leave the concept plan up, and I'll get going with the staff report. So, the main purpose of the development plan amendment application is to decrease the proposed minimum home size from 1,000 square feet to 850 square feet, also to decrease the proposed minimum lot size and width, and to allow flexibility in building material requirements. Also, the applicants are proposing to reduce the maximum number of homes from 32 to 30. In our review of the application, we found that the proposal complied with some of the criteria that we assessed in the review process. We did find that the proposal remains consistent with the moderate-density future land use map, and we found that the proposal may be compatible with the surrounding area. Staff has noted considerations, starting on page two of your staff report, looking at the lot size and width. We've noted that lot sizes for the proposed development are 3,675 square feet, and the proposed minimum lot width is 35 feet, and the proposed lot sizes and widths are smaller, smaller and narrower than lots in any of the existing nearby neighborhoods. Next, jumping down to natural features on page two, we've noted that there are mature tree lines that are lining the eastern and southeastern property lines, as well as other mature trees in the north-central portion of the property. Minimal tree preservation efforts are referenced in DPC number 15, and the applicants are proposing, actually, the second part of that doesn't apply. They've addressed that now. I'll get to that in just a second. Then looking at the changes to the building material requirements, that's under building materials review on page three. The applicants are proposing to amend the development plan conditions to allow unlimited vinyl, and are proposing to allow plain and split face, plain and split face block for building foundations visible up to six inches in height above grade. And I won't read through all of the materials review at the top of page three, but you can see the other neighborhoods that are nearby and their respective material requirements. Touching on the architectural features back on page two, noting that the current minimum home size required for this development is 1,000 square feet, and the applicants are proposing to change this to 850 square feet. And again, we've just noted the minimum home sizes for nearby neighborhoods in the first part of that paragraph there for your reference. And then last, looking at formal open space areas, that's on page three. 25% of each lot will remain as open space. However, there are no formal residential amenities or open space areas that are planned for the development. And I do also need to mention at your seats that you should have a revised set of development plan conditions. There are also three emails that were submitted from nearby neighbors, so you have those for your review as well. But I will highlight the proposed changes to the development plan conditions since you received your packets, the first. And number six, it was more of a housekeeping item that we had requested from the applicants relating to the amount of parking in the front yard, and they have addressed that. Initially, they had proposed to reduce the number of trees per lot from two, which is the current requirement, to one, but they've now changed that back in number 15. And then they've added a new development plan condition, number 19, and it states, "When platted, the development shall contain a plat restriction that for a period of 10 years following the issuance of any lot's initial certificate of occupancy, such lot shall be owner occupied." So those are the changes since you received your packets. Looking back at page one, you'll note that the staff's recommendation is for approval pending public hearing testimony and discussion. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. And we do have three written comments from neighbors. Commissioners, any questions regarding this proposal?
So Rachel, help me understand, it is currently PUD, but it's the DPCs that are, that are generating this meeting here today. Am I, would that be accurate?
Yes. So there's an approved development plan, since this property is zoned PUD, the current concept plan actually includes a mix of single-family attached and detached homes. However, this proposal that's before you this evening actually would replace that with the concept plan that's before you on the screen, which includes only single-family detached homes. And then along with that, we have both the written narrative and the development plan conditions, and, and those items are detailed in your staff report, those changes in bold on page three through page five.
Yeah. And so, I'm gonna just take a look at the big ones. So if I understand correctly, this would go from no vinyl to 100% vinyl?
Currently vinyl siding is allowed in soffits and gables.
Correct.
Yep. And so with this change, it would allow, that is an exterior material for all the sides.
850 square feet. Got it. And, and then the other largest change, I assume, is square footage, correct?
Yes. And that is on, let's see, that should be on-
On page three.
Page three.
Okay.
Yes. Number two, from 1,000 to 850.
Thank you, Rachel.
Yes, sir.
So Rachel, looking at one of these emails, it says, it's a residential area, and she continued with a 25-foot setback, because I guess what they're saying, is that what they're saying?
Uh, which email?
Off-set record, not crazy about the off-set.
Oh, that one is for-
I'm sorry, am I looking the wrong one?
Yep, that one's for item number eight, I think.
I see. Sorry.
No problem.
Rachel, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On page three, on the building materials review, it says, "The applicants are proposing to amend the DPCs to allow unlimited vinyl, vinyl." What is your, as a staff person, what is your understanding of unlimited vinyl?
It, it would mean that any of the homes in the neighborhood could use vinyl as an exterior facade material on all four facades.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
But we are going from 32 to 30 houses, correct?
Correct. There's a reduction by two.
But we're also reducing from 1,000 to 850 in the building.
Yes, that's the proposal.
Dana, I was just, just because I was looking at the traffic concern and stuff, but I mean, it's already approved for 32.
Correct.
We're actually going to 30.
Yes. Yes, sir. Thank you, Christian. Yeah.
All right. Commissioners, any other questions for staff? Is the applicant here, or their representative, anything y'all would like to add?
Chris Davenport, 921 College Street, and I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Chris.
Rachel, as, as always, has pretty much outlined this pretty succinctly. You've already asked some questions of some things I was gonna highlight, the first of which is, this is already a PUD. It's already approved for single-family homes. It's already approved for 32 homes. The applicant who's with me tonight is asking to actually reduce that to 30. Now you might say, well, why would you want to reduce, right, along with smaller square footage? Because what this board usually sees, or at least is, developers are usually accused of, is trying to lower the, the size of homes to increase the number of homes. We hear that all the time. This is not a request to lower square footage by 150 square foot in order to build 10 more homes and make more money. That's not the intent. That's abs, that's absolutely opposite the intent. The request here is, is to lower the number to 30, lower the minimum square footage to 850. Again, understanding not every home's gonna be 850 square feet. There will be a mix of homes, but the lowest being 850 as opposed to 1,000. And just putting it on the table, the, the goal here is to meet a housing need. And so some of y'all have heard this in the, in the last year for me. If you would indulge me, I want to highlight for this commission some things that we've heard from the joint city-county housing study that was, that was commissioned in 2003. Just to highlight that and how it applies to this application, 33% of our, our head of households in Warren County, one-third, are under the age of 35. That's an astounding stat to me. Those are entry-level first-time home buyers and/or renters. 60% of the renters in Warren County earn less than $40,000. I've, I've included in the slideshow the actual executive summary. I'm happy to pull that if y'all want to see these stats, but I've informed this commission of these stats before, I'm happy to do that. In the county, 45.3% of our renters, almost half of our renters are cost-burdened. That means they don't make enough money to afford the rent they're already paying. That's higher than the state average. Only 16.1% of households are owner households. That's lower than the state. The executive summary puts all this together and says, "There's an importance in our community for good quality and affordable housing." On page 13 of the executive summary, the commission and the people that did it said that, the stakeholders say the biggest need is 150 to 300,000, and the employers on page 14 that were surveyed said the biggest need is entry-level homes below 200,000. That's the price point that this client, this developer's trying to reach. In doing so, they will lose homes. They will lose two lot sales. But this is the demand that they see in the marketplace. I'm particularly astounded by, by the notion that almost a third of the market are first-time home buyers.
Rachel, where is the housing gap study? How can I find that?
Keep going. Click, click the arrow to the right.
To the right. So I provided this in a, in a, in a commission meeting sometime in the last year, I think it was last fall. And the take, this is in your, this is in the commission study. And the takeaway from this, if you look at the various employment types that are listed under occupational title, and if you go to the median salary in Warren County, what you're gonna find is time and time again, the median salary, the most common professions in Warren County are earning less than $40,000. There are some exceptions, but the exceptions are rare. And so what this client is seeking to do is they're trying to reach a price point that's between 162,000 and 206,000. They think they can do that with this product. Do you have the elevations on here, too?
He didn't send me those.
You didn't get them this, this afternoon?
I didn't get them.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's what they're trying to do in this price point. It's not an effort to increase the number of units. By the development conditions they are asking to be bound to, it's expressly prohibiting that. It is an attempt to bridge what the commission's housing study says is an overall low percentage of homeowners in Warren County. Now, I've said that before. This commission's heard me say that before. And this commission, on occasion, has agreed with me, I think, and, and adopted and passed some, some developments that I think the commission, I never know exactly why y'all vote yes, but I think you agree with me. There's something I want to highlight about this application, and that's the DPC number 19. When I discuss these changes with staff, frankly, and I, and if the staff, if I say anything wrong, they'll correct me. They always do that. It was pointed out by, by Mr. Peterson and Ms. Hurt that this level of housing is not the only type of housing we need in Warren County, and they're right. Warren County needs all types of housing. But frankly, it's much easier for me and my clients typically to get a 3,000-square-foot house passed. I rarely ever get an objection to that. It is in the, it's in the smaller houses that the objections occur, and there are a lot of people here tonight, and I'm sure you're gonna hear from some of them. So what the staff said is, Chris, if your client's trying to address the entry-level home buyer, that's, that's, that's a worthy cause. They've gave me some anecdotes around the county where some similar developments have been passed, and the next month, the next fiscal quarter, someone comes in and buys, in this case, 30 lots, and by the time the COs are issued, those are rental properties. Now, you commissioners know I am loath to discuss the difference between homeowners and renters. I frankly don't think it's really in the ordinance. Single-family housing is single-family housing, period. And I'm not walking away from that. But as the staff point out to me, Chris, how are we gonna know if the goal is first-time home buyers? And you're saying that's, that's a policy point that's in that commission study that we need to be addressing, how do we police that? You do it with DPC 19. And DPC 19 says, and my clients are agreeing to it, that on each one of these lots for a period of 10 years, once the CO, the certificate of occupancy is issued, it must be owner-occupied. Because I, I will give them credit. They are right. If we build entry-level homes, but we don't have some mechanism of bridging that rental to homeowner gap, you're not really addressing the need. And so that is the intent of DPC number 19, and I will commend the staff, that's, I think, some ingenuity on their part, and I'll commend my client for working together to do that. Now with that said, just to wrap this up, the only differences here is we're losing 150 square foot on the minimum home size. We are adding vinyl beyond gables and beyond soffits as an acceptable material, but we're losing two lots, we're going down in density, and we're losing twin homes. And we are ensuring that the development addresses the need and help people get out of rental homes and start building some equity in homeownership, so they can move up to the 2,500-square-foot homes, or the 3,500-square-foot home. It's really hard when you've rented property to come up with a down payment on a $300,000 home and avoid PMI, 20% insurance premium, if you don't have something in between. I think the commission study says that, and I think my clients have kind of, they've backed up their statement with that DPC. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions y'all have.
All right. So we're going from 850, we're going from 1,000 to 850-
Yes, sir.
-plus vinyl?
Yes, sir.
So, we could argue this all day, but that doesn't move the needle that much on the price of the home?
Well, I'm happy to submit some testimony from my clients that will say that, that it can.
Okay. But we're talking about, you're using the number of 175 to 200,000. Let's just use that number. It doesn't change it that much.
Probably 25,000.
Yeah, okay. 175 to 2-
But, but I'll say this, somebody that does this out there can't sell 250,000 houses right now.
Okay. But we're, we will get into the compatibility with the other neighbor. But we will get into the compatibility with the other neighbors around here.
And I guess, and I appreciate that, Commissioner Warren, I will say this, if you look at the zoning map, the existing housing in that area are RS-1D lots. We're not talking about smaller homes next to RS-1A or RE lots. As you all know, RS-1D is the smallest single-family lot size in our zoning ordinance. And I'll also say this, we're not actually amending the lot sizes here. The minimum lot sizes haven't changed. And I understand, Commissioner Warren, that a lot of times we talk about compatibility, and some people say that means if I've got a 3,000-square-foot home, then to be compatible, you have to build a 3,000-square-foot home. Well, I'm not saying you're saying that. But I know we hear that from neighbors. And I think, I would say, that's not consistent with the ordinance. That's not what the ordinance means by compatibility, number one. And number two, the ordinance repeatedly says we do need to encourage diversity of the housing. I think we can all agree on that.
So, Chris, I'm gonna tip my hand a little bit, and then I'm gonna kind of tell you where I'm standing. And because you are really good at what you do, I want to give you a chance to change my mind.
Okay.
This is a tough sell for me. So here's what I see. I see at 1,000 square feet, you're already the smallest home in the neighborhood.
Is that a fair statement?
And if I look all the way back to backing up to the interstate, still 1,000 square feet is the smallest home there. Second is you already have a pretty good diversity of, excuse me, vinyl in the neighborhood. It's not a trade that I see as beneficial or compatible when you switch it to 100% vinyl. The, I could buy, they could save some money if they do a grading plan and go to no brick, and so they'd be doing slab-on-gray.
Yeah, and that's in our revised conditions.
And I would buy that. There are things in this that I could accept. But the whole package, man, this is a, I hope they're paying you a bunch for this one. This is a tough one. This is a really difficult one. Because here's what I see. I see pretty much an established neighborhood on both sides and backing all the way up to the interstate. So we know it can't go any further there. And there was another development that was going to come in across the street, kind of where the, oh, where that airplane beacon thing was. And so we were a little bit hard on that one as well. But the vinyl is a tough sell for me. And so I'm kind of just playing my cards, and I'm not normally as hard on people as I am being on you.
Well, you know, I've got a wife, and I've got a law partner sitting back here. I think he's doing my performance review today, so I'm used to it. That's okay.
I have a problem with reducing the square feet as just a commissioner. And I agree with you, Christian, but, I mean, when we say somebody could build something bigger, that's a subjective what-if.
Well, and you know, I understand beauty is sometimes in the by of the beholder. I feel like I'm here a lot of times talking about twin homes. The neighbors stand up and say, why don't you build a small detached home? And now I'm here tonight talking about we're going to eliminate twin homes, right? Now, I don't know what these neighbors are going to say. And I guess I don't know if these neighbors realize that twin homes are currently approved, right? I don't know that, so I shouldn't assume that. Sounds like at least some of them are.
Chris, what's the square footage on the twin home?
Well, right now, under this plan, they could be 1,000 square foot. Okay? Per unit.
So, just to make sure I understand, that's a 2,000-square-foot structure, correct?
Yes.
Fair enough, yeah.
But, you know, again...
And is rental allowed now?
Right now it would be. They could build 32 homes right now.
They could all rent them. We're only talking 30 or versus 32, so we're not...
Right now, they could build 32.
And they could all be rented.
And they could be rented out as soon as the CO was issued.
Tim, let me ask you this.
Yeah.
Would you be better with this if they did brick fronts?
I would be better if they had, I tell you what, I could concede a vinyl rear facade. Here's the tougher part for me. If this was a straight-up development, we hadn't seen this before, then I would just take Chris right at his merits. But this one's different for me for two reasons. One is the neighborhood is somewhat established, but now we're changing DPCs that are already, have already been approved. And in my view, it's possible that people have made financial decisions based on DPCs that were in place, right? And I'm just trying to be, well, I'm trying to be as fair as I can and see if I can get something that could help a development, but not be a burden on the neighbors.
Chris, let me ask you this. Would your clients consider doing maybe a percentage of the houses below 1,000 feet? Because I know, there's no way you can go to all houses at 800 feet.
Yeah. And Commissioner Volker, you guys know I'm happy always to discuss anything you want me to with my clients. And that's certainly something I...
I mean, you know, we're talking about, I mean, they can build 32,000-square-foot houses today and build all 1,000 feet. But, you know, maybe there's a happy medium here where there's a percentage of them that could only be below the 1,000, between 850 and 1,000. I mean, it's impossible to build that many 850-square-foot houses. You can't find them in four flats. So they're kind of different. So, I don't know. I'm just thinking out loud.
So, Chris, I would offer this, and I can only speak for myself. There are some things in here that could save them some money, and they could. They're not going to, in my view, just for this one commissioner, this is a tough sell. I can't get there, right? Here's what I could get to. If you could go to brick on three sides, okay. I would give you the rear facade. That's going to save you some money. You could eliminate the foundations by going to a, you'd have to do a grading plan, but they're probably planning to do a grading plan. That gives you six inches of exposed concrete, right? So you don't have any brick that you have to do on the foundation. You don't have the cost of the foundation. You just pour in the slab. And it's a similar method to some of the competitors. I'm not naming names, but you know what I'm talking about there.
We actually have that DPC already.
It's already in there.
That's in there.
Yeah, and I'm good with that. I think that saves them some money by going away from the cost of the foundation. So you've got some things in here that save them money, and I'm good with. But...
I've got some things to talk about.
Okay, very good.
All right. Chris, all right. Make it quick.
Before you talk, I have one other thing I'd like for you to address with them. What gives me heartburn with this is the unlimited vinyl. We can negotiate on that. Unlimited vinyl is kind of out of the question for me.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I know there are people here that want to be heard, so I'll make good use of that time. I'll try to listen and talk at the same time. Thank you all.
Wait a minute. Commissioners, any other questions, Mr. Davenport, before you sit down, Chris? So I think you've heard about the square footage, the vinyl, and we are agreement 32 to 30 lots. So that's not an issue. So if you want to talk to your clients...
Be happy to. Thank you all.
And anybody in the audience tonight, you've heard the staff report, you've heard the applicants' report. We've talked about the vinyl. We have talked about the lot size. Is there anything that you would like to add that is different than that? We would like to hear from anybody, but we don't want to be repetitive. Is that fair enough?
Because Dana, I really don't think we get into tonight traffic and say stuff like that. It's already approved.
It's already been approved. So we'll, something different. I think we've talked about the value, compatibility. So something different that is, that we've not addressed. And we want to hear everybody. So, yes, ma'am, if you come to the microphone, and you have three minutes.
My name is Carol Douglas.
All right, Ms. Douglas, your address?
3979 Cadillac Court.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
President of the McKenzie Meadows Homeowners Association. And you all have heard about this planned development that butts up adjacent to us. I've read the reasoning behind the changes. I guess I would define what is a family for 850-square-foot home? What is that? Is that a family of four that you expect is going to go into a 850-square-foot home?
I don't think we would discuss that.
Yeah.
That's not something that we would...
These properties are directly related to us.
I understand.
And in terms of being compatible. If it is passed, we would like to have buffers of some type between our properties, especially to the two lot owners that just purchased their properties to build their dream homes. They've been blindsided by this, and that's what you were just talking about. Something to buffer, whether it be fencing, tree line, anything like that to cordon off that area.
So, ma'am, I'd like to point out, though, that this isn't a new zoning. So those houses were already there when they purchased that lot.
Correct.
Right?
I'm saying if they present it and do the new...
I see, okay.
Version. That especially these two lot owners that just purchased these properties under the premise of the old plan, now they have a different plan, that there be a buffering to it. We also have one on Small House Road that's already been agreed to, to have a buffering on her property. But now we have two lot owners that are purchasing and planning to build their dream home, and they would like to have that same accordance. Okay?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Douglas. Anybody else that has something different? And we appreciate your comments, Ms. Douglas. Yes, sir, something different? Your name and address, please, sir?
Jeffrey Meeks, 4126 Woodhaven Avenue. If y'all look on that map, the roads are acting like they're going to keep going. So what's going to be the future plan? Because if everybody's got a phone, you can look on Google Maps. I'm a young guy, not older. This isn't my forever home. But what's going to happen to the next development? Like, we're talking, you see how them roads stop? Can you go back on the top lip? You see that road? If you look at my house, that road will eventually go right here. I live on the last lot in Legacy Point.
By regulations, it needs to be, we can't change that, so...
Well, I know, but what's going to be the future development of these cheap homes? And going to do to my home price? Because I'm, no offense to anybody in here, I'm half some of y'all's age, and we plan on moving up. So what are these homes going to do to my price in 10 years when I plan to sell?
I don't know.
So just think about that before we start approving cheap homes and stuff.
Yes, sir. Anybody else something different? We got home values. Something different, please. We want everybody to be heard, but anything different? Yes, sir. Question? Yes, sir, your name?
Joseph Steele, 4027 Cadillac Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just real quickly, the name Vitali, is that part of the owners that are trying to do this development? And is that a name that I heard as part of this commission? Vitali?
His sister is a commissioner.
She's not here tonight. She's not here tonight.
And she has no influence or impact on friendships or anything as far as her impression on this right here, I suppose.
Well, she's not here tonight, and she recused herself.
Yeah, but I know, but she knows about all of this, too. I'm just throwing this out there. So there's a connection.
What are you insinuating?
I'm just saying, a conflict of interest.
She's not voting.
She's not voting, but does she have influence for the rest of the commission? That's all I'm saying.
I think you're a little out of line.
Pardon me?
I think you're out of line.
Oh, I'm just throwing this out as what we see, and that name comes up as part of the owners that are proposing this, and that's all I'm saying.
I think the issue there is everybody on this commission knows people in town.
Sure.
So every meeting, we have people come in that we do know.
Yeah.
Somebody does. So I don't think that's fair.
I just wanted to hear if that was correct, if I was correct about that name.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Steele.
Thank you.
All right. Anything, yes, ma'am. You've got three minutes and your name and address?
Okay, my name is Susan James, and I live at 3919 Chevy Way. And my property borders this.
And you swear to tell the truth.
I swear to tell the truth. Okay, I'm very, very concerned about flooding. When this drainage basin was made, it was designed for two extra houses. Now you're proposing 30. The townhouses were better. They had more yards. They had more places for the children to play, more places for dogs to go to the bathroom. Now you've got some of these properties that hardly have any backyard at all. And our yard, we cannot grow a pine tree. Alveton Nursery, we tried to plant trees to block this, and Alveton Nursery came twice. Our water table in the summer is three feet high, or low, I should say. And in the spring, our backyard is soggy and wet. Now you're telling me that you're going to dump all of these extra houses and all of this concrete. There's extra roads here from the last plan. There's less yards. The townhouses didn't have that. And nobody has talked about flooding. But our drainage ditch fills up very full during a hard rain. And we look at it in worry that it will overflow. And I've even seen on the internet that that's possible in 30 years. And I'm really worried about this.
Sure.
We're crowding this in. I'm also worried about children. This is not a good neighborhood for children. Where are they going to play? In the drainage ditch? There's, it's just not a good plan for bowling green.
Thank you. So, staff, would you talk about the design of retention basis?
Addressing the drainage issue, yes. Certainly. So as part of the development process, assuming this were to move forward, the drainage plans would have to be engineered and designed by a certified licensed professional engineer. That would be submitted to our office and reviewed by Warren County Public Works. I believe this is county, right? Yeah. So that would be Warren County Public Works, and they would review that and approve, and stormwater, and they would review and approve or request changes to the plans in order that they meet the requirements of Warren County. And so they would not be allowed to push water off on anybody else or cause any water, more water to go on property that is pre-development stage, post-development. So that is the requirement.
Yes, ma'am, something different? Okay, real quick. Your name and address, please?
Pam Hereford, 3907 Small House Road.
Yes, ma'am, swear to tell the truth.
Swear to tell the truth.
Thank you very much.
We are the property owners on the east side of this development. Obviously, the property line is our main concern. Property line is a solid row of trees, which are 20-plus feet tall, and they provide a dense barrier for our property. The site characteristics reviewed by the staff addresses natural features. At the direction of the engineering staff, they are suggesting a do-not-disturb buffer with a 10-foot perimeter from the property line. This will provide a measurable standard, replacing the development plan condition number 15. So I'm requesting that this do-not-disturb buffer be approved as part of the DPC for the east perimeter of the property.
All right, thank you very much. How do we address that?
That'd be for the applicant to address. When they responded to our suggestion, they indicated that that was not feasible based on their design. So they may need to speak more to that.
So, and this is one more question for staff, if I may. And I don't want to get lost in the weeds here, but this is already a PUD. What's the request for the landscape buffer? Is it the vinyl siding that makes it, makes a need for the landscape buffer? What is it that makes a need for a landscape buffer here?
There's already a requirement in the development plan conditions. Currently, the required development plan condition states that the developer shall make all reasonable efforts to maintain mature vegetation and shall plant no fewer than two trees per unit at the time of, no, just period. And so right now, the current development plan condition, it's, it's not very firm in the wording because it just says shall make all reasonable efforts.
Did that go away if, in their, in their new application?
No, we had just requested that they provide a more measurable standard, which is what we've been seeing with other recent applications. Because what is the best effort or, there's no way to define that. And so we were just trying to get further definition on that. Ben's nudging me here. And there is also a current requirement along Elrod Road, there's a 10-foot buffer requirement for any side or rear-facing facades. But, so that is a measurable standard. We can say, okay, you have to have a 10-foot buffer in this location compared to number 15 as currently proposed. There's really not a weight, a lot of weight with that.
So it's not something new, it's maybe some clarification on an existing... Correct? Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, we were just asking for them to define what that means. Because we don't, we can't really say what's reasonable or not.
Got it.
And with other recent applications, the applicants have provided a measurable buffer width that we can actually enforce as the property develops in the future.
Got it, makes sense, thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Mr., anybody else tonight? Yes, sir, something different? Your name and address, please, sir?
Tom Morris, I'm a property owner at 3795 Small House.
Swear to tell the truth.
I swear to tell the truth. I actually live at 1321 Elizabeth Street. So I've seen some concern about the size. I'm not opposed to the size or the impact on the community because I know the desperate need for smaller, affordable housing. And it was said that the traffic issues were not subject to this debate. My question is, when will it be a subject of debate? Because I go to that property all the time, and that roundabout is undersized. And there's just, there's a need for...
Yes, sir, Mr. Morris, we don't deal with the traffic, we, we just don't deal with it.
And I made that comment, and my only reason for making that comment is because the society has already been approved for 32 houses.
Right.
And so that really wasn't up for discussion tonight.
And that traffic consideration has already been approved?
I understand, I understand that. My question is, if there's a problem in the future, how will it be addressed?
Well, it might be better directed toward the Transportation Department than the Planning Commission. Because in my experience, the Planning Commission does not make the traffic plan. The staff might be able to step in here and, and help with that.
Sure, so there's, there's the planning portion for new roads and, and existing roads, and expansion of existing roads. We basically get that information from the Warren County Public Works, and their transportation folks review these on the front end. And then any improvements, of course, after a road becomes public is a responsibility of Warren County Fiscal Court and their transportation folks.
So I need to talk to magistrate about it?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Always.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Thank you.
That's correct. Mr. Davenport, if you would come up here and you've talked to your clients and...
We've discussed some of the discussion we had earlier. Before I get to that, I'll just say, with regard to the concerns about what people refer to as a buffer, I think you all kind of got, finally got to the bottom of that. The current condition it's offered is the same condition that was passed two years ago. Rachel's right that in the past couple of years, they've started to request that we change that verbiage some, but there is no alteration in that. In fact, when we submitted this with one tree, I didn't realize that was reducing by a tree. That's why we changed that this week, because the intent was just to keep that the same. Didn't want to diminish that at all from what's currently approved. Now, to the gravement of the conversation about the vinyl and the square footage. I don't think I can give you everything you want, but I'm hopeful that I can give you enough. Because my clients agreed to the following. In DPC number two, this is the square footage development condition. I would add, and first of all, before I do this, I do, one of my clients mentioned, Ms. Isaac mentioned, you know, Chris, please make sure that everybody's aware it's in the audience. We talk about 850 square foot, you all know, that's heated and cooled living space. These buildings also have a requirement of a one-car garage at a minimum. So to your question, Commissioner Graham, the actual square footage is bigger than 850. That's just the minimum heated and cooled living space.
Yes, she's correct.
But what we're offering is a sentence that would say no fewer than 15 homes shall have a minimum of 1,000 square feet heated and cooled living space, exclusive of garages slash porches. So that's at least half the homes will be the same size that's, that's allowed today. I think that's a genuine and a significant concession on their part. And again, it is their intention to have a diversity of housing plans and housing sizes. Commissioner Graham, to your point, and Commissioner Starks, to your point. I hope you won't be disappointed in this. In DPC number four, I would add a sentence to the end that says, "The first floor of each front facade shall be comprised of stone, brick, LP smart siding, ephes or other semiticious or modern masonry materials." What that means, Commissioner Starks, and of course, Commissioner Graham, I haven't offered you three sides. I've offered you the front facade.
You said first floor.
The first floor, which means a gable could be a different material. The, and I, and the reason my client tells me, they, they think that makes a better looking when you have...
I would not, I would not disagree with that. I think they make a good point. So I want to, but I want to make sure that I'm, that I'm understanding because there's a difference between the first floor and, and now we're adding a gable, for example, in the case of a story and a half, and I could actually buy that. I'm okay with that.
You're worried about two stories.
There you go.
Let me clarify, I'll tell you, I don't think it's the intent that these building plans will be two stories.
I didn't think so, but the way you said it made me just ask the question.
But I'm happy to clarify that. Right now, I have been offered, I've been authorized to offer that.
This is on four sides?
It's on the front facade. The front facade.
Okay, you said originally first floor.
The first floor of each front facade.
So it's just the front?
Correct. And I, and I'll tell you, Commissioner Graham, I, I like to get developments approved, you all know that. And there...
I'm trying to help.
Some very hard discussion about where that puts them. And, and without beating the point here, that, that's where the line is with them.
Got it. What else, Chris?
I, I think that's, I think that addresses the, the buffering comment. I heard some talk about traffic, and I think you all have addressed that. But when we rezoned this to PUD, we made the improvements that was requested at that time. We agree to those improvements. And the last thing I'll say is the roundabout that we're talking about, that's this client that built that. I mean, that's been years. But that was part of a development they did to improve the traffic in that area. And if anyone enjoys that, that was, and maybe some people don't like roundabouts, so maybe I shouldn't say that, but that's what the state wanted at the time, and that's what they did.
And it's been improved in the meantime, as well.
Yeah, I think they've made that median better.
Exactly right, that was the biggest issue.
All right, Chris, anything else?
No, sir, I think that's it.
That's it, all right.
The last thing I would say, and I would be, would not be doing my job if I didn't say this. Staff has recommended approval of this even without those additional concessions. And I must stress that point. My clients worked with them very diligently to try to make a plan here that staff was comfortable recommending even without those other concessions. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chris.
And I will say, our recommendation was prior to the hearing or any testimony or evidence presented tonight or discussion.
That's correct. All right, thank you, Rachel. All right, commissioners, we've heard the, the applicant's amendments that they've agreed to. And Mr. Peterson, we got those in the record? And do we need to swear anybody in to do that? You're comfortable with that? So commissioners, we call for a motion, please.
I make the motion to approve the proposed general development plan amendment, docket number 202507 DP, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. The proposed general development plan amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Conference of Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Further, I also find that there have been major changes to an economic, fiscal, and social nature within the area of the property in question, and I request that the findings of fact and recommendation include a summary of the evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
They did a great job. Unfortunately, I can't reach them on this one, I'm gonna have to vote no.
Chair Warren?
No, sir. The motion has passed three to two. Planning Commission final action, so it's approved. Thank you all for being here tonight. Our next item tonight is 202508 DP, Life Skills Incorporated. Care of Joe Dan Beavers have filed an application to amend the general development plan, development plan conditions for six acres located at 3038 Swanee Trail Street. 38 Swanee Trail Street. The area subject to this application is Current Zone Office Professional. And so Jenny, your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll make our way over to those slides. Here's an aerial shot of the property. We had a pre-application meeting for the property on Swanee Trail Street, April 29th of this year. Current zoning of the property is OPC Office Professional Commercial. Current land use is commercial. And then the future land use map designation is mixed-use residential. And then here are some images for the current site. And then here is their site plan, which is also available for you all. So the applicant is proposing to amend the development plan for six acres located at 380 Swanee Trail Street. The main purpose of the application is to revise the maximum square footage that is permitted for development on the entire property. There are also minor changes proposed relating to access, building height, and lighting. All changes are detailed beginning on page three of your old staff report. And so looking down to the bottom of page one, the proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process, remains consistent with the adopted Conference of Plan, and is generally compatible with the surrounding area. And with that, staff's recommendation is for approval pending public hearing testimony and discussion here tonight. And that's all that I have, I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
You have any questions?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you all.
David, anything you want to add?
I think we better just wait until we have a quorum back in the court.
Science medicine.
Chair Warren, we just had the staff report, so if we have any questions with staff, that would be good. If not, we're ready to proceed with...
Yes, questions?
No questions.
Apologize. Applicant?
Chair Warren, Chris Davenport, I'm here with Joe Dan Beavers, President of Life Skills, and David Broderick, they're board attorneys here, too. I don't really have anything to add, we're just trying to build another building. This application's very consistent with others in the area that have increased their square footage as that area has built out. So we, we think it's right on board, I think there's no policies out of compliance on this one.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone in, in the audience tonight has opposition or questions for this request? Hearing now, commissioners, call for motion, please.
I make the motion to approve the proposed general development plan amendment, docket number 202508 DP. Based on the testimonies and documents presented in the public hearing, the proposed general development plan amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Conference of Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Further, I also find that there have been major changes in economic, fiscal, and social nature within the area of the property in question. I request the findings of facts and recommendations include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir, the motion's approved, Planning Commission final action. Our next item is 202527 Z County, Derek and Mallorya Fields. The applicants, and Herman and Tracy Fields, the owner, have filed an application to rezone six acres located at 2216 Riverside Ben Leo Road from Ag to Rural Residential with the general development plan. Jenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting for this property on Riverside Ben Leo Road on December 4th of last year. Current zoning of the property is agriculture. Current land use is agriculture. And then the future land use map designation is agriculture as well. And then here are some images of that curve in the road. And then here is their proposed configuration. The applicant is proposing to rezone a little over six acres from Ag to RR, Rural Residential, in order to create an additional building lot. Looking down to the bottom of page one, there are just a couple of considerations that staff would like to point out. The first is looking over to page two regarding loss of prime farmland. Roughly a third of the property is classified as farmland of statewide importance. The next, we'll look over to page three. The first will be under the proposed density. So that's under surrounding density at the top of page three. Density is an area range from 0 to 1.03 dwelling units per acre with an average density of .26 dwelling units per acre. The applicants are proposing to subdivide the property into two lots, though there is no requirement in the DPC limiting the development to the number of lots shown. Based on the current fire protection ordinance and available fire flow, only two lots could be subdivided. If the fire flow improves or the fire protection ordinance is amended in the future, the applicants could potentially subdivide an additional lot, which would not comply with the recommended density increase that is outlined in HN 1.2. And the proposed density for two lots is .33 dwelling units per acre. And then if they were to future subdivide into three lots, it would be .5 dwelling units per acre. Next, we'll look down to surrounding architectural features midway down the page. Structures in the area are residential and agricultural in character with homes primarily one-story in height. Homes oriented to face, homes are oriented to face Riverside Ben Leo Road, excuse me. Homes in the area range in size from 932 square feet to 1,885 square feet with a median and average home size of roughly 1,400 square feet. The applicant is proposing a minimum home size of 1,100 square feet in DPC number eight. This is less than the median identified for the area, though the existing residence that is located on the property is 1,193 square feet. And with that, looking back to page one, the proposal does comply with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and is generally compatible with the surrounding area. And so staff's recommendation is for approval pending public hearing testimony and discussion tonight. And that's all that I have, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jenny. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
So Jenny, if I could, let's go ahead and clear up that one issue. Currently, there's no limitation on the number of lots. And if they came back and asked for another building lot, would they have to get it rezoned at that point?
So that would be dependent on if the fire protection ordinance changes as well as the fire flow in that area. So if they did that, they would have to come back because the minimum acreage, or, excuse me, they would not have to come back because the minimum acreage is two acres, and they have a maximum of six acres. So then that would be exactly two acres per lot. So they would not have to come back before this body.
So we would have to address this in a DPC, then? So we would have to address this in a DPC, then?
Yes, that's typically staff's recommendation is just to set out a maximum number of lots.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Anybody else? Questions? Is the applicant here or anything they would like to add? Anything you'd like to add different?
My name is Mallory Fields. I am the applicant.
Ms. Fields, you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
And you understand about the question about the two lots?
Uh, yes. We didn't add that in there just because, like, what is shown is what our plans are. We bought the property from my husband's uncle, which is the existing house that you've seen. So we don't have any future plans to divide our part, which is the top part. And also, I heard the concern about farmland. The land that we bought is heavily wooded. There's nothing on it. So it's a tree farm currently. So that's all I wanted to address.
All right. Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Ma'am, if you would come back just a minute, Mr. Graham has a question.
So I heard you say you don't have any intent to add additional lots. So are you okay with adding what we call a development plan condition here? Simply laying that out and stating that it's for two lots, no more than two lots? If you wanted more than two lots, you'd have to come back and ask for another zoning at that point?
My husband is hard of hearing.
That's okay. Bring him up.
Yes, sir.
They're asking that would we be okay with making it two? But if we, for some reason, if Herman wanted to sub his lot, they would just have to come back and address it and ask for approval.
Yes, sir. If you state your name and address, please, sir.
Derek Fields in 555 North Ridge Drive.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. You swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
The thing about the building lot, especially for my uncle, is they're getting older in age, right? Which, yes, you know, he could come back and do that. But his son did have intentions on maybe in the future, once they get to the state that they need someone to take care of it, maybe putting a spot on his property.
But you understand it'd have to be the fire protection?
Yes. Yes. And I understand that. Of course, that has nothing to do with me. But that's why we didn't really want to put that in there is because I don't want to commit to something that...
So are you talking about like a separate home that they could later sell? Or are you talking about just an additional home on this particular lot?
Uh, it would be an additional home on his lot.
Okay. So if it's an additional home on his lot, there's still nothing preventing you from doing that? It's only if you want two separate, well, correct me if I'm wrong about that, staff.
We do have options in the zoning ordinance for accessory dwelling units for family members, but there are limitations on the size and square footage of those. And so it could be that in the future that his son could meet those requirements without having to subdivide a separate lot. But in the event it was going to be more than 50% of the size of the home, then the only option at that point would be to carve off a separate lot to where it was considered a home, considered a single home on a separate lot.
But that doesn't affect this, correct? His application doesn't affect this?
Doesn't affect the...
What they're asking for?
Apparently, if I'm understanding correctly, they're asking for a change in zoning on both of them. Only one of them is his lot, though. That's what's got me confused here.
So right now, the property is only one lot. What's on the screen would be the proposed subdivision if this were to be approved?
Does he own both lots?
No. I don't own both lots.
It really, if I'm right, it just comes down to they want the ability in the future to possibly have three homes on three separate lots.
Yes.
Currently, all they plan to do is just have two homes on two separate lots.
So here's ideally what I would like to do. I would like to ask him for a DPC for one lot on the lot that is his. And the other one, it seems to me that that's not his lot anyway. Am I wrong about that?
So you're requesting that...
Why would we do that?
Pardon me?
Why would we do that? I said, why would we do that?
Why would we deal with that?
With the other lot, you mean?
Why would we deal with any of it? I mean, he's just asking for a lot, a three-acre lot.
I don't understand the problem.
Another lot, there would have to be, I mean, the fire, I mean, there so much has to be done. But if you wanted to come back once that's done, I mean, you're gonna have to plaid it. And then it wouldn't be two acres.
I may be able to simplify the discussion.
I misunderstood. That was the question that I asked in the beginning, and they said no.
So here's the question for you all. If fire flow were to be improved in the future or the ordinance changed, would you find that three lots of two acres in size per lot would be compatible with this area?
Yes.
And if so, then you don't need to worry about it. You could just approve it as is.
Very good. All right.
All right. Thank you all so much.
Thank you guys very much.
Sorry for the confusion, guys.
Thank you all for being here. Is there anybody in the audience tonight has a question or opposition to this request? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. If you state your name and address, please.
Brenda Bollinger, 2020 Riverside Benalo Road.
Yes, ma'am. You swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just wanted to know what kind of home they're gonna build or what they're gonna put out there. Because I live right down the road, and I have a big home, so.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't, you know... There is trailers out there, too, so.
Sure.
But it will have to be a minimum of 1,000 feet, even coals.
The proposal right now prohibits mobile homes, but manufactured homes would be permitted under the current proposal.
No mobile home, though.
Correct.
Not the older style, like, that are still where you could hook up a truck and pull it off? Not a mobile home, but a manufactured home would be permitted under their proposal?
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Anyone else in the audience tonight has a question regarding this? Commissioners, we call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon a general development plan, docket number 202527 Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objective and action items in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The motion is approved. And Planning Commission final action in 21 days unless a request is made for a legislative body to hear the item. Our next item tonight, excuse me, is 202528 ZBG, Western Apartments LLC, care of David, Weston Apartments, excuse me, care of David Alfred, has filed an application to rezone 22.82 acres, located southeast corner of Russville Road and southwestern Parkway from Ag to RM4 multifamily residential and highway business to highway business with a general development plan.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting in April for the property that you mentioned, and is highlighted in red. The current zoning is agriculture, RM4, and HB. The proposed zoning is HB. And the future land use is mixed use commercial. We do have a couple of property photos for reference. And then here is the supplied concept for your review. And again, the applicant is proposing to rezone from Ag, RM4, and HB to HB in order to subdivide the property into multiple commercial lots for future development. Looking down at the bottom of the page, the proposal complies with majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and is generally compatible with the surrounding area, but staff has noted considerations regarding loss of prime farmland and the location of parking and signage. So if we look over to page two, under the prime farmland, roughly two-thirds of the property contains a soil type classified as prime farmland or farmland of statewide importance. Looking over at page three, this proposed development is located within the boundary of the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan. So looking down at 1B, a minimum of 50% of all required parking should be to the rear of the front building line for office, commercial, and multifamily development. Parking should not be located with any required building setback line. This partially complies with this policy. DPC number three requires that no parking shall be within any required building setback line unless the lot is surrounded by roads on three sides, in which case this condition will not apply to such lot. This condition shall not apply to lots running Russellville Road. And there is no requirement limiting parking behind the front of the building line, though many of the lots shown on the preliminary development plan have multiple frontages, which presents challenges for complying with this policy. Looking over at page four to WV-3C. To ensure visual compatibility and suitability in all commercial zoning districts, signage should be limited to two signs, one freestanding and one wall sign per property. And any freestanding sign should be ground-mounted monument-style. This application partially complies with this policy. The applicant is proposing in DPC number 10 that signage should be limited to one freestanding sign per lot, one wall sign per structure, excluding the lot at the corner of Russellville Road and the southwest Parkway. In such case, this lot may have two wall signs per structure. This exceeds the number of signs recommended in this policy. The applicant did not agree to prohibit, uh, did agree to prohibit billboards and temporary signs and further limit the height and square footage of the freestanding sign to a maximum of 10 feet in height with a maximum sign face area of 100 square feet, and freestanding signs will be monument-style. So with that being said, back to the first page. The staff recommendation is approval pending any public hearing and any discussion of the items that we mentioned. That's all we have for staff report. We happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Amy. Commissioners, any questions of staff before the applicant comes up here?
So Amy, the primary thing I heard was sign, but it sounded like they made some concessions. Can you summarize that for me? Where did they land?
Sure. So going back... To the wall signage. And so it'll be limiting one freestanding sign per lot and one sign per structure. And then, so they agreed to prohibit any billboards and temporary signs and further limit the height and square footage of the freestanding sign. So I guess for the wall signs, they are reducing the freestanding sign square footage. Is that correct, Rachel?
Well, the difference is actually on the wall sign requirement. They've exempted basically the corner lot, the lot at the corner of the southwest Parkway and Russellville Road. They are proposing for that property that they can have two wall signs per structure, which would exceed the one-wall sign recommendation for that property. But the other properties, aside from the corner lot, would still be bound by the one freestanding sign and one wall sign.
My guess would be because they're planning on a service station, a C-store, something.
If you look at the concept, you can see what appears to be a fuel canopy and structure. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Graham, Mr. Volker. Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you, Amy. Is the applicant here or anything that you would like to add?
Good evening. Gaines Penn, 1101 College Street. I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Gaines.
Here on behalf of the applicant as counsel. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'll just point out, historically, more than half of this 22-acre is already zoned highway business. This is a little bit more than a housekeeping matter, but that's where we start. With regard to the questions about the sign, we're trying to fully comply with the more stringent requirements in the Walnut Valley Focal Point. The only thing we're trying to accomplish is, somebody correctly pointed out, this fuel station on the corner is gonna need an extra wall sign. That's what we're, that's why we're trying to fit. Okay.
That makes sense for me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gaines. Is there anyone in the audience tonight has opposition or a question regarding this request? Okay. Hearing none. Commissioners, we call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon a general development plan, docket number 202528ZBG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by the compliance with the objective and action items in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion includes a summary of evidence, testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The motion is approved. And Planning Commission final action in 21 days unless a request is made by a legislative body to hear the item. Our next item tonight is 202529 Z County, Liberty Federal Credit Union, care of Stacy Shroud, the applicant, and Jesse and Joyce Burton, the owner, have filed an application to rezone 4.1 acres located 8505 Nashville Road from Ag to general business with the general development plan. Ms. Hur.
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back in April for the property you just mentioned at 8505 Nashville Road. This is the aerial view of the property. And as you mentioned, the current zoning is agriculture. Current land use is single-family residential. And the current future land use designation is mixed use residential. We'll review the property photos. And then we'll leave the concept up for our discussion. And the applicants are proposing to rezone this area in order to redevelop the property with a new credit union. In our review of the proposal, we found that the proposal complied with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process, and we found the proposal to be generally compatible with the surrounding area. We have a couple of items for your consideration. The first of those being on page two, under layout, lot sizes, and setbacks. This relates to a surplus of parking. The parking shown on the preliminary concept is 21 spaces more than what the zoning ordinance requires. The applicants, however, did agree that at least 50% of the required parking shall be located behind the front building line. Also, looking at the front building setback, a majority of the existing structures on the same side of Nashville Road are setback more than the 25-foot minimum setback required by the zoning ordinance. They're generally at least 65 feet from the property line. And the location of the building shown on the submitted concept plan is approximately 100 feet from the property line. Staff suggested that the applicants consider including a development plan condition requiring an increased minimum front yard setback to reflect what is shown on their concept, and that would be complementary to other commercial properties on the same side of the road. However, this was left unaddressed. And then the, next on page three, I believe, under prime farmland, we've noted that a significant portion of the site is designated as prime farmland. And then last, looking at the proposed open space, the proposed general business zone requires a minimum of 20% open space, though the amount shown on the preliminary development plan is much greater than this. And staff suggested that the applicants consider including a development plan condition that reflects the amount of open space shown on the preliminary development plan. However, this was not addressed. However, on another note, I will say that the majority of the other commercial properties in this Nashville Road corridor in this area don't have more than that 20% open space requirement. Looking back on page one, you'll see that our recommendation is for approval pending public hearing testimony and discussion. Be happy to answer any questions.
So Rachel, go back to the setback again. Say that one more time.
So it may be better on the aerial view. Well, it doesn't go out that far. But basically, we've noted that if you look on the west side of Nashville Road to the north and south, the existing commercial structures... north and south, the existing commercial structures are all setback more than the 25-foot minimum front yard setback, at least 65 feet from the front property line. And what they've shown on their concept is also more than the 25-foot minimum. It's about 100 feet off the front property line. But there's no requirement that they adhere to that.
Got you.
Since it's not in the development plan conditions.
So the requirement, the, the conflict with the requirement would be if we zone it and then for some reason they don't go forward with exactly what they have here, uh, there's some possibility that someone builds it up closer?
Correct.
Is that my understanding?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff? All right. Thank you. Is the applicant here or the representative? Yes, sir. Your name and address, please?
Russell Frederick, 101 East Second Street, Owensboro.
Okay.
The architect for.
Okay.
For the current, uh, here to answer any questions in my head.
Well, I think you heard about the setback.
Yes.
It would, we would put a development, I think Mr. Graham brought that in. Would you agree to a development plan condition setting it back a minimum of 25?
No, 25 is the requirement. 65 is generally the minimum that the other commercial structures are set back.
Would you agree?
When we exceed that, so.
Yeah, so, so.
But we, we need a, a condition that you agree to that, 65 feet?
You're asking us to move the building towards the road?
No, no. Yeah, so, so allow me if I may.
Sure.
You currently have well beyond 25 feet.
Yes.
The only liability we would encounter here is if for some reason we approved this without what's called a develop, a, a development plan condition, someone else could build a different building if you didn't build this one and move it up to the 25 feet. You have no intention of doing that, so essentially what we're asking you to do is say, would you add a development plan condition to this lot, saying that you would build no closer than 65 feet and leave your building exactly where you have it right now?
I think we could, yes, we would agree.
All right, very good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant or their architect? Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you driving here from Owensboro. Anybody in the audience tonight that has a question or opposition to this request? All right, so we've got the, that noted in the minutes, Mr. Peterson?
Yes, sir.
All right. So we call for motion, please.
I make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with condition upon the general development plan, document number 202529Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action item presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. Motion is approved, and planning commission final action in 21 days unless a request is made to legislative body to hear the item. Our next item tonight is 202530Z County Journey Pure Bowling Green LLC, care of Joanie Furlong, the applicant, and PRI Properties LLC, care of Renee Isaacs, has, has filed an application for zone 11.21 acres located at 8264 Louisville Road from Ag to highway business with the general development plan. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting back in April for the property that you mentioned and that is highlighted in red. The current zoning is agriculture. Current land use is single-family residential, and the future land use is industrial. Here are a couple of photos for you. And then here is the concept plan. And again, the applicants are proposing to rezone from agriculture to HB in order to redevelop the property with a substance abuse recovery center, which will include both inpatient and outpatient services. Looking at the bottom of the page, the proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and is generally compatible with the surrounding area. Therefore, the staff recommendation is approval pending public hearing, testimony, and any discussion we might have. That's all we have for our staff report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions? Okay. Is the applicant here or the representative, anything you'd like to add? Mr. Davenport?
Uh, not really, Commissioner Warren. I would just note that, uh, this staff report is recommended for approval with no policies out of compliance.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a, a question regarding this request or opposition? Yes, ma'am. Your, your name and address, please?
I am Paula Terry. I'm at 725 Lick Branch Road, Glasgow, Kentucky.
You, you live in Glasgow?
I do, but I own the property directly across from this.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
You swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I do want to have, I do have concerns because I have owned the property all of my life, since I was born across the road from that. And, um, I, my expression of concern is, and I want to make sure that they know, I have nothing against treatment and recovery programs. I think they're very vital in our present-day society, but my concern lies in not being an appropriate location for this type of facility due to the impact of the surrounding agriculture and residential area. The proposed facility is incompatible with the area's zoning and comprehensive plan, as I had researched, which prioritizes residential and agricultural, uh, use for the, this part of our community in Warren County. The introduction of an institutional medical facility does not appear consistent with long-term usage of the land outlined in that plan. Also, as we were looking at this, this, uh, if the facility is approved, we'll be adding even more vehicles to the Louisville Road area, which is under growing pressure with our trans park, as we're all very proud of it, but it has added a lot of overcapacity to our present highway corridors. I know that, yes, we're in the process of updating that plan in which we're taking the four-lane area on two, where she is present, where the proposal is, but in doing that, the state has only allowed for one crossover site from where the four-lane highway is all the way up. That is in front of my property. It is not directly in front of their property. So therefore, I can see that there could be a lot more congestion during that time because everybody that is on one side of the road will have to go up, turn around to go to their homes on the same side of the road as my property is. And therefore, that could create quite a, a problem, especially during key times that we're looking at. We don't want to ignore those risks to the commuters, our school buses, and also the emergency, uh, response times for anything that may be done. The introduction of a drug and alcohol treatment facility combined with the industrial growth from the trans park makes our area less attractive, uh, for those quiet, stable neighborhoods where we have residents looking to come to this. I know that Warren County has wonderfully, uh, had a big growth, and you all have been super busy, and we're knowing that more people are going to be coming to the northern part of the county. But we need to look at that as an opportunity for our residents to find a place in these neighborhoods. The stigma, increased traffic, and potential security concerns discourage future homebuyers and destabilize investments in the land affecting our property values. This area may be seen as less desirable for residential living and also for our farming and agriculture, as Warren County was once known as one of the top agricultural counties in the state of Kentucky. And thus, even as I've seen tonight, so much of our agricultural land is being rezoned into other areas. Approval of the drug and alcohol rehabilitation center in this location could set a precedent for similar facilities being placed in rural agricultural residential areas without sufficient services or oversight.
Okay, you've got, you've got 30 seconds.
Okay. I request that you deny, uh, this zoning, uh, time and that the location be reconsidered for a commercial or in a institutional use. Thank you.
What was your, what was your last name again? I'm sorry.
It's Paula Forster Terry. T is in Tom, A R R Y, like linger behind.
All right, thank you, Ms. Terry. Thank you for being here tonight and driving over from Glasgow.
Okay. Any questions?
No, ma'am. You had your comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very well prepared. Anyone else in the audience tonight? Yes, sir. If you would come to the microphone, please?
Ricky Jones, live at 8333 Louisville Road.
What was your last name?
Jones? J O N E S. Living up where the Joneses.
Jones, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Sorry. Yes, sir, Mr. Jones, and you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Like Ms. Terry, I've been there across the road from this property 45 years. I'm not against treatment, period, but I am in that location. Like she said, the, the roads, they're not done yet, but there'll only be one crossover. All the traffic out of that place, he's got to take a right, go down towards the interstate, don't know whether you know what's that or not, got to turn back around, come straight in front of my property. I'm not against progress, but a drug facility, it just don't fit there.
Okay.
I am dead against it.
All right.
And I hope the commission does deny it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Appreciate you being here tonight. So we've heard about, uh, commissioners, we've heard about the traffic, the, uh, turn lanes, compatibility, um, and the potential use of this facility. Anyone else in the audience tonight that has opposition to this request? So, um, hearing none. Commissioners, we call for motion, please.
I make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon a general development plan, document number 202530Z County, based upon the testimony and documents in this public hearing, a proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objective and action items in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further requests, this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The motion is approved, and it's planning commission final action in 21 days unless a request is made for legislative body to hear the item. Thank you all for being here tonight. Our last item tonight is 202531ZBG and 2025V12 Harlan Gray Investments LLC, Ram Capital LLC, 34 Properties LLC, care of Matthew Simpson and Rich Story, have filed an application for zone 4.77 acres located at 1011 Campbell Lane and 2423 Small House Road from RS1A, single-family residential, and RM3 Townhouse Multifamily Residential to RM3 Townhouse Multifamily Residential with the general development plan. Harlan Gray Investments LLC have also filed concurrent variance application requesting a 15-foot variance from the required 25-foot increase setback when adjacent to a single-family residential uses. Rachel?
Thank you, Chair Warren. Uh, before I get started, I will mention you should have a new set of development plan conditions as well as an email from a neighbor that we received late this afternoon. We had a pre-application meeting back in March for both of these properties. And if you recall, um, when we get to the zoning map, or you may recall, if any of you were here, uh, the portion that's currently zoned RM3 was rezoned back in 2018. And if we look at the aerial view, you can see that a portion of the development, um, has already occurred along the southern boundary here. Um, you can see some existing buildings there, and, um, this proposal tonight basically expands the development area to encompass what's currently zoned RS1A. So they're requesting to rezone everything to RM3, uh, to have the same zoning that currently exists on the west side. The current future land use map, you'll, you'll see that the southern half, or roughly southern half, is moderate density residential, um, with the northern portion being commercial. And we'll review the property photos. And then we'll leave the concept up for reference. In our review of the application, we found that the proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and found the proposal to be generally compatible with the surrounding area. We do have a couple of items for your consideration. Uh, the first relating to density. We have noted that the average density in the area is 7.39 dwelling units per acre, and the proposed density is 11.32, which does technically exceed the, uh, recommended dense, recommended density range in HN1.2 by 0.22 dwelling units per acre. Looking at building orientation on page three, um, specifically the building nearest Small House Road, you'll see that on this plan, that the preliminary concept shows the building to face Small House Road, or that it would be oriented to face Small House Road, though there is no requirement in the conditions, um, that the property be developed as such. And then last, looking at the, um, open space areas, I'm going to skip over the screening requirements. Those have now been addressed with the revised development plan conditions that are at your seat, so I'm just going to jump straight to the open space consideration, and that's on page three. The applicants did commit to a minimum of 40% open space, though there are no formal residential amenities or recreational areas that are planned to serve the development. I believe that's all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
So commissioners, we do have the revised development plan conditions on our, on our desk tonight. And, uh, any questions for Ms. Hurd?
Rachel, get me oriented here. The photo that we see, is, is that picture of that residence on the property that's being?
No.
Rezoned?
So this residence is the residence at 1011 Campbell Lane. So it would be on the northern portion up here. And then if we go back, this is the residence that fronts Small House Road.
Okay, very good.
Um, which would be up in this general location here.
I see. So that brick home, can you point to the location of that brick home on that map?
This one?
Uh, yes, the one in the background there? Right there?
Yes. That.
So it, will it be removed?
Yes.
I see. Okay.
Okay. Sits on top of that hill.
Yeah, if we go back to the aerial, you can see it situated in the trees.
Got it. Okay. All right, I'm with you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions, commissioners? Is the applicant or the representative here anything y'all would like to add? Mr. Davenport?
Yes, Commissioner Warren, Chair Warren, thank you. A couple of things I need to clean up. Number one, we will agree that the two units most adjacent to Small House Road shall be oriented to face Small House Road. That, it's on the concept, that is the intention. I did see that in the staff report today, so, um, we're best put that, Rachel. How about put at the end of seven? The building structure. Yeah. We'll put that at the end of DPC seven. The other one that we need to clear up is on your, it was on number 11 that you sent me the email about today, right? So on your revised number 11, DPC 11, I need to ask that the first sentence be stricken. And you're going to say, wait a minute, why are you taking out a landscape buffer? And I'm going to try to explain that. We're, we're actually not trying to take out the one that's required and the one that was intended to be. I got an email from Rachel this afternoon. I think she looked at this again and realized, let me back up a second. This at one time was two projects. And, uh, my clients had the, the portion which fronts Campbell Lane and fronts Mohawk, which is the side street at the bottom. That's been rezoned, that's partially developed. They added another piece of property that actually fronts Small House to it. And originally, we were just going to rezone that. And staff thought it would be better to have. And staff thought it would be better to have all this under one set of DPCs. So just go in and rezone what's already zoned and what's partially developed. And what happened is, that ends up applying to both, that wasn't really the intention. So if I understand what Rachel told me, the buffer that they wanted is already required anyways, and so when we bring that from the old set to the new set, it causes more confusion, really, on where that's supposed to be. So I'm just going to ask that the first sentence of 11 be stricken, and that's your all's suggestion, is it not?
Yes, we've suggested that. It's already required by the ordinance, and then the new, well, now the only sentence of 11, addressed the other concern of screening on Small House.
Which is what you wanted?
Yes.
So I think we've done what the staff wants on that. This is an extension of what's currently developed. It is a, it's a townhome product with one car attached garages, 80% masonry product. The clients, Mr. Storey, Mr. Rich Storey, Mr. Matt Simpson are here. The new section is to match the old section. Staff suggested that, so we've included that. Really with that, she did mention density. Commissioner Graham, we've talked about this in the past, how we average these. I just note the immediate vicinity has density over 18, and we're requesting 11. I think that is perfectly reasonable, given this area town. I'm happy to answer any questions y'all have. Whether about the zoning or the variance, we haven't really talked about that, but the variance is really needed because of the narrow nature of the property.
On Small House.
Uh, yes, on Small House. Yes.
So Chris, can you tell us the variance, can you explain the variance real quickly?
Yeah, so it's along this stretch.
It's narrow.
It's very narrow, and I'll, before I was involved in the project, the concept that Mr. Slavy did was actually kind of flipped, if I understood it, and I think staff partly recommended that we do it this way, and to be frank with you, I think one of the thoughts, as I put in my application, is, I understand this is a single-family residential property today. I will say, though, look at the distance between that existing home and that property line. That is a far piece, I would say, and I would say, and I think staff probably doesn't disagree, but when that home ceases to exist, I highly doubt that will be a residential property. That is a commercial flume property at the intersection of one of the busiest intersections in Warren County, with a long-range plan currently on the books to improve Small House. So-
So that current residential zoning is what forces you to need the-
To request the variance.
God, okay.
And before we even filed this, my client agreed to a privacy fence along that property line to mitigate the effects of the variance.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you all.
Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Davenport? Lucas is here, the applicant's here. All right, we have two items. One is the zoning request, and then the variance.
Chair.
Excuse me. Lucas, you got any comments? All right. Anyone else? You're with the Daily News? All right, you got any comments?
No, sir.
All right, thank you for being here tonight and reporting on it.
See, we got them covered.
He's our Daily News guy. Appreciate you doing this.
Let me.
What's your name?
Justin Story.
Justin Story, yeah. All right, thank you very much. So I think we have no one else in the audience that has a question tonight, so we would call for a motion for zoning, and then also for the variance.
I make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with a condition upon the general development plan, docket number 2025-31Z BG. Based on the testimony and documents presented at the public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. Zoning map amendment is approved, and now we'll call for a recommendation on the variance, please.
I make the motion to approve the request for a variance, docket number 2025B, well, a 15-foot variance for the proposed structure in the REM-3 district adjacent to a single-family residential district structure or use. The testimony presented in this public hearing has shown that the granting of this variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare, will not alter the essential character of the general vicinity, will not cause a hazard or a nuisance to the public, and will not allow an unreasonable circumvention of the requirements of the zoning regulations.
Second.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. Both items were approved, and planning commission final action in 21 days unless a request is made to legislative body to hear the item, and the planning commission final action on the variance. Mr. Peterson, any new items?
No, sir. Just mention that we do have one item for the 19th meeting, but then we did get three items in today for the July 3rd meeting deadline. Being July 3rd, we'd probably need to check for a quorum head count as early as, early as we can, so.
There's a federal holiday on the 19th, so there is still a meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We'll do, Matthew, you'll send the head count out.
What is the 19th?
I do not remember the application.
It's a rezoning application on Cumberland Trace Road for multifamily development next to the Lehman Avenue Church of Christ.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Story, thanks for being here. You going to give us a good report tonight?
I'm going to give us a good story.
Huh?
I'm going to give you a good story.
We got a good staff. We got, we got some commissioners that are questionable. We got a good staff.
We do, that's right.
Make sure it's a good story.